Mike, thank you everybody for coming this morning to join us for a short prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon us. Dear Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to be here this morning to lead the county. We pray, dear Lord, that the decisions we make here today will be the best for the most people in the county. And we pray, dear Lord, that the decisions we make will be pleasing unto you. We ask, dear Lord, you to lay your hand upon our law enforcement officers and help keep them safe. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. To close this meeting open, if you'll join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mike, thank you everybody for coming this morning. The agenda's not huge, but we will work this quick as we can. Minutes of our last meeting have been circulated among the commissioners. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve. Second. All in favor? Well, so I have a claims docket that's been circulated among the commissioners. I entertain a motion to approve the claims. I'll make that a motion also. Second. All in favor? We also have a payroll docket that's been circulated. I entertain a motion to approve the payroll. And I'll make that a motion. Second. All in favor? First thing this morning is the Hamilton Center Annual Report. Good morning. Cindy told me you'd be filling in today.
My name is Amy Glover. I'm the new Program Manager for Newton and Sullivan Hamilton Centers. I'm here today in behalf of our CEO, November, so I wanted to give you the numbers for last fiscal year, July 1st, 2023, June 30th, 2024. The total patients served for Green County was 1,000. That is 733 adults and 267 youth. Clinical encounters which is therapy provided with a licensed provider was 4,504. The average time for an intake appointment offered is 20 days. Most of our referrals come from self-refill, law enforcement, hospitals, ECS, and then the schools are a major contributor. Over half, 553 of our appointments were paid for by Medicaid. We participated in the Local Meeting Council, Green County Alliance, Child Protection Team, Child Fatality Team, Green County Community Action Team, and the Client Consultation Board for DMHA. Events that were attended were the Fall Festival Health Fair, Lincoln Freedom Festival Parade, Green County Night Out, Shackham Map Health and Information Fair, Bluefield Apple Festival, Bluefield Resource Fair, Bluefield Job Fair, and mental health training at Hamilton Center. New programs that were started last year were two Matrix programs. A Matrix is our intensive outpatient addictions, and they have a major management group that meets Wednesdays. For addictions, 263 adults will provide addiction treatment and for you. Most of the treatments for those happen at the office in the community, in the home, courthouse, or jail. They use Matrix, MRT, and Relapse Prevention as their major evidence-based treatments. For mental health services, 583 adults received treatment and 280,000 youth provided those services. Youth are usually seen in the office or the schools, sometimes in the home and community. And for adults, they are mostly seen in the office, at consumers' homes, Bluefield Housing Authority, or the jail. The major evidence-based practices they use are Matrix, MRT, Relapse Prevention, CDT, DVT, and motivational interviewing. The most common diagnoses that we see in Green County are generalized anxiety disorder, PTSD, and major depressive disorder for adults. And for youth, the most common ones are anxiety, disruptive mood dysregulation disorder, or PTSD. Are here for that year for $78,436. We did that pretty quick. Does anybody have any questions?
It's a lot of information there.
A lot of information.
Kind of puts you at a disadvantage trying to relay all this information in this type of setting, but... It is nice to see this report though.
Yeah, it was very, I thought it was very good, very good information.
So what can we do to help you?
Um, I'd have to talk to Cindy because she's the one that does, you know, most of the county. I have not heard of any, you know, areas that need anything different, but if there is a lot for get back to you guys.
Step needed service. That's quite obvious. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have letters of support for BEAD applications. We've got several requests for letters of support for this round of BEAD applications for broadband grants for the county. Some of these were very, very specific, and some of them were almost like mass mailers. So Marvin, I think you've prepared some letters. Do you have any comments?
Just for record's sake, to say that the requests came from AT&amp;T, Indiana, Strategic Management LLC, Charter Communications, Comcast, and Life Management. Those are the letters that have been prepared.
Questions?
I don't know if there's any reason that we can't support all of those. They're not really competing against each other, although they are competing against each other, but...
In manner of speaking, they're competing with the dollars, but it is quite common to pay for municipal leaders to issue letters of support for anyone who makes a request who the leadership feels will be beneficial to the county. And at this point, anybody can bring qualified broadband to unserved or underserved areas, and we have plenty of those in the country. Anyone who can bring a reliable service who is in that category would seem to be welcome.
Yeah, I don't have any problem supporting anybody that wants to make the investment in the county. I was very encouraged to see that we did have that many people looking for letters of support for their application.
Especially in rural areas.
Yes. It was, it was very encouraging to me. Any other questions, comments, discussion?
No.
Marvin, can we make one motion survive? I would entertain a motion to sign all letters of support for BEAD applications.
So made.
Second.
Wish them all good luck.
All in favor? I don't have any commissioner board appointments this morning. Don't see Breann here.
Commissioner, was there an access fee for me in this?
Oh, I guess there is. Sorry, Doug. I skipped right over you.
I'm usually skip.
I'm just not used to seeing you here.
Today on the agenda, emails for me. Sorry, we have a 300,000 mile truck that we've replaced. I said something for kids. Talk about a second. We got all three of our trucks. We got the two grand trucks plus the truck that we purchased all at once, so we kept the truck here. That's a good problem, right? Sheriff may be interested in that.
If we decide to get rid of the one that don't have a modern rear input again, we would popularize some direction on what you would need for that truck and possible transfer to us. We started the CRT team, but there's more uses. We got a lot of equipment that could and should go to every call out. We'll sell it in a room and our police interceptors also. We get on contracted demand so we can use it as a quasi-command center where arrested and it's weather like this where we could rotate people, get them warmed up, get water, different things. So we would have an interest in that one truck if it one gets out. So I just want to throw that out there.
Doug, have you got any body looking at what they think they should be worth?
There's a couple, one of 300,000 models that thinks is going to bring a couple thousand miles. I haven't had this up with praise.
Let's look into that and see what that vehicle is worth, and I don't have any problem if the sheriff wants it, to go ahead and keep it with the sheriff's department.
I think, yeah, if the board, if you decide that's the best place for it to go, I'd like to have a recommendation from you what to do with it.
Since we aren't going to get much out of it anyway, we'd get more money, the county would get more money out of the investment to keep it here and use it than we would be basically giving them away.
It's worth a lot more to us than it is. It's got 85,000 miles left on the warranty, almost two years since that.
Yeah, I mean, if you'll use it, I mean, we don't want to keep it if it's just going to park somewhere and not be used, but if you get a use for it.
We do, and it wouldn't be used a lot. We would probably also use it, you know, train out of it, but we do have a legitimate use for it. You haven't seen it running up and down the road every day, and that's not a bad thing. When we get these call outs, and that's the reason we formed the CRT. It's started a year and a half ago. It's about ready with the training to go operation. There's a lot of equipment that needs to get there along with the guys.
Are you thinking something you'd re-sticker and repaint, or?
I would definitely re-sticker it. It's already got lights in. We probably keep the existing emergency lights, be a lot of EMS decals, and mark it up with something else and take it to the service department. If we have to do, I don't know how much modification, or if any, probably not a lot on the interior to take the cotton out of it and a few other small things. Probably put a ladder rack on it eventually, some different things. Different situations will need a lot of different equipment. Some of it can already be there on the truck. We've just got some bigger ballistic shield, some entry tools and ladders, and I'm sure we'll add more tools as this progresses.
Sounds like a service truck for the sheriff's department.
We have traded vehicles among county entities before, and actually, I mean, we did one of the sheriff's department to the veterans. We usually make that very nominal. So Doug, if you can come up with a price for that and what you think works, and then I think it would be an EMS decision as far as maybe they ought to make a recommendation to us. Yeah.
I just wanted to put it out there that if the board determines that it is time to move it on, or if they want to keep it for a square truck, that we'll look at it in the future or another one. We definitely do have an interest. Probably not so much in the 300,000 mile truck that will kind of, it's kind of a special name with the motor being replaced in it.
Right.
It's got some long daddy in front of it.
I just think we need to be careful about getting too many vehicles. Appreciate Doug keeping them trimmed down. We don't need more vehicles than we want. Same thing with the highway department or anybody else. It's just expense we don't need. If we don't need them...
Doug, have you got any place in mind as far as putting your, advertising your access?
So I have a person from Illinois, Missouri that's interested in buying a 300,000 mile truck. So is the, I think the wholesaler that we used to sell to the whole county. Is that interested in advertising the market?
We've got a 20, I believe it's a 2017 Expedition. We've kind of been handing home to you for that purpose. If this works out, we probably will sell that Expedition and move it along. The old ambulance for Ford drivers, I know a lot of them are in the space.
Well, if that's the case, I'd be willing to take what he gets out of that one for it, probably.
Yeah. Or if I'm concerned about having it, so it's a need.
We've always, we've always made the other department pay something.
And that's fair trade. I don't know, I'm not asking for it for free, but they ought to allow us...
If you're going to get rid of that one anyhow, I'd be more in favor of that. If we can get rid of the vehicle and add a vehicle at the same time, I'd like that better than just adding.
Would you like to make a motion to take that, the sheriff, take that ambulance and trade for his expedition, and then unless you want to advertise your expedition?
Yeah, we can, I can get the information to Marvin's office on that vehicle and...
Advertise at the same time you do Doug sell the vehicle?
Sure.
If EMS is okay with that, I'd be okay with that.
We'll have a meeting around after this, knowing it'll probably be on.
I'd make that motion pending approval of EMS. They say it's okay. I say it's okay.
You have a motion to allow the sheriff to receive the surplus ambulance from EMS with the sale of their expedition to go as payment for said ambulance?
Whatever they get, whatever they get, we get. Whatever he gets, you...
Did you get that, Heather?
I'll say it's more than...
All in favor? No, I need it. I entertain a motion to allow EMS to advertise their excess vehicles for sale.
So made.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Two birds, one stone.
Thank you.
Now, I don't have any commissioner board appointments this morning. Breann's not here. County attorney?
Couple of things before you leave this morning. Pardon me. Number one, question is, is it asked whether you want to add a commissioner's certificate this year at the beginning of spring? My understanding is that we have about 62 certificates, less whatever certificates might be transferred to land bank. And so there may be enough to be for conducting the sale. If you want to conduct that sale, two things need to take place, two things need to be approved. First, there is a resolution indicating that you wish to conduct the sale, and that resolution also identifies those 62 properties. Nice chart, but SRI is prepared for the county. The second thing that will need to be done is that there is an addendum to the new master service contract that we are under with SRI, the party that conducts the sale for us. And that addendum simply determines the cost of conducting the sale. That cost is the same as it's been for a number of years now, 15% of the value in our base. And so there would be two-step process involved if you wish to conduct this.
I've been through that list. I proposed 23 of those properties to the land bank, and we need on Thursday. I'll have a decision after Thursday if the land bank's interested in taking any or all of those. I prefer that we wait until after that. I wouldn't be able to provide the list, Marvin, until after Thursday.
Sure.
I guess we could go ahead and if we want to have the sale, can we modify the list after that? Or do we need to have the list finalized before we approve?
You know, the next meeting's not that far away, and if you, the bank is having a meeting on Thursday, why don't we defer a decision on this until February 4th? Can I have them provide an accurate list coming out soon?
I can, I can have them finalize Thursday. We'll know which ones they want, which ones they don't.
Marvin, would you like to have a motion to have a certificate sale with the number of parcels to be determined?
Actually, I'd prefer not to.
Okay.
As your instances, the resolution, normally we'd have the properties to be sold, and there's a part of the resolution. And so we're as close to possibly carrying this down. I would...
Okay. I can have that list finalized, and I can have the dollar amounts both for the, before our next meeting. Get it, Marvin, here next week. That works.
Pardon me. My second matter is an administrative matter within my office. Every three years, it comes time to renew my electronic research service with LexisNexis. I didn't shop the service this time because I knew that required experience that when you get the best price from Lexis, I've been satisfied with that service. I use it almost every day. It has gone up a bit, but it is well within our budget in the office. It's a three-year agreement with a 5% increase per year. So it starts out at 152 a month, which is a little over $1,800 a year. And then the second year goes up to 160 per year, 160. That's basically exactly what I expected. And it's exactly the same service that I'm doing. Doesn't expire until the end of March, but I'm trying to stay ahead of it.
Questions, comments?
No, he needs the service.
Well, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agreement.
So made.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you. I don't have anything more specifically, but there is a discussion item that includes my office, just in terms of participation. That is the Comcast dedicated fiber line for the town. And we, I'll defer to Michael to head on that.
That's your cue, Michael.
Morning. So, Tara was approached last year with Comcast to talk about our internet. Of course, we upgraded our internet to gigabit speeds last year with copper, which, you know, it's a lot better than what we had before with the 5 times more speed. But that was also before that I was told that we had fiber in here. Whenever I was in my original discussions, I was told that it wasn't. But our family rep for Comcast came back and said, hey, there's actually is fiber in here area, and it'd be a lot better than what you currently have. So, and it was, what, two weeks ago we had?
About two, about two weeks ago.
We had a meeting with them to kind of go over it again. And they would like...
Just give us the hard part. How much is it?
For what they had quoted us, for a dedicated line here, we're looking at 700. I'm not entirely sure based on this email if there would be any additional costs. There shouldn't be any installation cost to run fiber into the building for wherever they have to run it to. So I do believe that it would be $700 for the pricing of the internet.
That's an additional cost, or that's...
No, currently we're paying $262 a month, and so it would be 700 total. And that's for one gigabyte up and one gigabyte down, true broadband. And with that's with five static IPs. I don't know, is five enough static IPs for us?
Yeah, that's what we've been having.
Well, I noticed up in the PDF, they're offering 29, comes with 29 static IPs. But if five's enough, it's included in there anyway, so...
So it's under six grand a year we're going to pay now?
Yeah.
What the...
The installation's going to take four months. If we sign it today, it's still taking, it's going to be in June before it's going to be up and running. So a new, new budget will be in the process, and it can be budgeted for, but that's going to leave us six months without budgeted needs.
So are there any other fiber providers?
I believe Comcast. There is. Comcast is what's here.
Right.
We're using Comcast and have for years a good service.
I didn't know whether there are any other here in town, is that the only...
I don't know how close they are.
I don't know about AT&amp;T, but from what I've heard, I believe Comcast that pretty much controls it. AT&amp;T might have something.
This is not only faster, more bandwidth, the courts are needing more all the time, and that's, that's what our push is at, is to keep up with the courts and prosecutor and all the other business that we have, and that just keeps increasing all the time.
And we've been working towards this with the new equipment that we've been putting in and having programmed where we're capable of handling that much. We've not been capable of handling it. And we'll still, we'll still want to need firewall capable of handling that much speed and bandwidth. Ours, we have a firewall, but it won't handle that. So that'll be an extra cost on us, but I think we have the money and the budget already figured for the firewall.
So I'm way over my skis in this discussion. Again, we don't think that there's anybody else that can provide that kind of fiber. Aren't there resellers that resell? You're not aware of anybody else that can provide that service?
From what I've been told, it, it should just be Comcast in the area, but I will, I will read them. I will read them.
I guess I'd like to know that, to be sure there's no other providers that had the capabilities to provide it.
I don't know if they provide it around here, but we've got Smithville, I would recommend making that direct.
I do not believe I can guess.
We don't have Smithville here, right? We might have AT&amp;T. I think that's a possibility, so we can check with AT&amp;T and see what they have to offer.
Okay. And they're with, the offices that's coming to mind is like the prosecutor's office and the sheriff's and whatnot. They're uploading body cam footage that are like huge files.
Well, I think it's nice that we do.
We just want to get the best deal possible.
I'm not, yeah, I'd like to know that that's the only provider out there. If that's the only provider, it's the only provider.
So you want to check on that and?
I will.
Get back with us?
Yep. I'd be happy to.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think the price is reasonable. I guess someone could afford it.
It's good for 30 days, so we can see what we can find out in the next two weeks from.
If you can, I'd appreciate that, yeah.
I'm sure if I agree with you.
Thank you, Michael. Drop us all an email on that, whatever you find out. Do we have any elected official or department head comments this morning?
I guess, a little skin will make a little bit, going back to the motion that was coming earlier on the expedition. I neglected to request to have a minimum bid on that vehicle. It is a good vehicle, good solid. I'd like to pair a minimum bid of $5,000 on each.
I would entertain amendment to the previous motion that the sheriff's excess vehicle that will be up for bid will have a minimum $5,000 bid.
I might bid motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Good morning, Roger.
Good morning. We need to, you know, we're finalizing the bid package as we speak. Put the bid package out for Community Crossings match grant, which is, you know, a million dollar grant, which makes it 1.5 million. We can spend on that. Like to get the bids back in here by nine o'clock at the editor's office by your first meeting in March, which is the fourth, March 4th. We have to have them under contract by the end of March or basically the first, so. It's just, it's just the one big, large package.
I would entertain a motion to advertise for the Community Crossings bids.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Can you have Brent email me that package when he gets it done?
Do we have any other elected officials or department head comments this morning? Have any public comments this morning? Commissioner Michael, you have any announcements this morning?
I do not.
Commissioner Graves?
No, sir.
Our next regular public meeting will be February the 4th, 9:30 a.m. in this room. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all for coming.